11 East Maple. Mr. City Manager, welcome. And we've got the Canterbury Trails HOA Sewer Discussion. So, Mr. City Manager, if you could frame it and then lead us into our discussion.
I would be happy to. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Your first topic tonight, as the mayor introduced, is a discussion regarding one of our neighborhoods in town, Canterbury Trails, who's been having some challenges with their sewer system. City's been having conversation with the membership of the Homeowners Association for some time now, and the Homeowners Association had asked to have a public conversation, or I should say, a conversation with the council about this. So, we wanted to give the group an opportunity to share some of the challenges they're facing and some of their thoughts that they've put together around this issue, and then city staff to share some of our current perspective on that as well, and see if there's any direction that the council would like to provide on that matter as well. So, tonight, speaking on behalf of the association, is Garland Land. Several of you may remember Mr. Land from his time serving on the Public Utility Advisory Board, so I know he's no stranger to many. And I'll go ahead and welcome Mr. Land to the podium, if we could, please.
Welcome, Mr. Land.
Thanks, Zach. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council.
Talk into the mic there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there we go. My name is Garland Land. I grew up here in Independence many, many years ago. We lived in Jefferson City for 34 years when I was an administrator in the Missouri Department of Health. My wife and I moved back to Independence 18 years ago and bought a house in Canterbury Trails. As already mentioned, I was, for seven years, served on the PUAB, so I've been involved in issues relating to city government for some time. I want to acknowledge that members of our board are here, including the Chair, Jackie Summer, our Chair of our Sewer Committee, Mary Rosalano, and other members of the board, and our Sewer Committee members, and residents of Canterbury Trails. Well, I was told that would work.
Yeah, we're working on that. Just one second.
Would it work if I do this? There we go. Okay, we'll do it that way. So, why are we here tonight? For several months, the city and Canterbury Trails Board has had conversations about our sewer system. There was a meeting of the Canterbury Trails homeowners on June 12th to discuss the situation. I want to thank Mayor Rowland and council members Fears and Wiley for attending that meeting. After the meeting, a sewer committee was appointed by the board, and on June 28th, to research the sewer issues and make recommendations back to the board. The committee has been meeting every two weeks since then. We conducted a survey of the homeowners, developed a map of the sewer system, consulted with DNR, consulted with a plumber that does a lot of work on the sewer system, researched cost of repairs on the sewer line, reviewed the city charter, reviewed state laws, reviewed the history of the city sewer charges, and reviewed the Independence Department of Water Pollution finances. So, we have been, we have tried to do our due diligence before we come to you tonight. Tonight, I will discuss with you the Canterbury Trails sewer system, a funding proposal on how to improve the system, and why we feel our funding proposal is fair. So, if you're not familiar with the Canterbury Trails subdivision, it was started back in the early 1980s, and it's on the eastern edge of the city of Independence. The subdivision has two levels. One is access from Crenshaw Road, and the other is access from Strode Road. There are 91 homes in the subdivision. The streets are private and are maintained by the Canterbury Trails Homes Association. The sewer system is also private, and is maintained by the homeowners and the association. The electrical lines are underground, which helps the subdivision, but it also helps IPL. So, the Canterbury Trails sewer system is composed of two components. Most homeowners have a septic tank that is maintained by the homeowner. If you're familiar with septic tanks, you probably think of septic tanks as having laterals that go out into the yard. That's not the way this system works. The septic tanks are connected to a line that goes throughout our subdivision, and then that line is connected to the Little Blue Valley Sewer District. So, it's a little bit, when we talk about septic tanks, it's a little bit different way of thinking about septic tanks than what you would normally think of. There, in the last 14 years, since 2011, I think I, in the last 14 years since 2011, there have been seven repairs on the main line, and the association paid for the repairs on the line. Three of the seven repairs in the last 14 years have occurred last year or this year, in 2003 or 2024. The increase in repairs the last couple of years may be indicative of the age of the system, lack of preventive maintenance on the main line, homeowners not pumping out their septic tanks frequently enough, or some other issue that we're not aware of. As the system ages, we anticipate that there could be more repairs in the future, but we lack a dedicated source of funding to pay for the repairs. So, we had developed two different alternatives to address this situation. Alternative one is to ask the city to take responsibility for our sewer system. This would require installing a new sewer system that conforms with the rest of the Independence sewer system. This would require tearing up and repairing the yards and streets to install the new lines throughout the neighborhood. The cost to Canterbury Trails homeowners would be somewhere in the order of $3 to $4 million to have the city take it over. And that, and we would probably have to bear that cost as homeowners, and that would be somewhere around $40,000 per homeowner. Alternative number two is to develop and enforce septic tank and main line installation and maintenance standards. Upgrade the main lines if necessary, which may include installing new cleanouts, and I'll talk about that later on. Because alternative number one is such a high cost and would be so disruptive to the neighborhood, we are recommending alternative number two, to develop standards and upgrade the current system. So, let's talk about alternative two. We propose to develop septic tank standards that would be enforced by the association. The standards would be used when new septic tanks are installed and maintained. Currently, there are no septic tank standards enforced by us or by the city. The association will contract with a company to pump out all the septic tanks in the neighborhood. This will ensure that all septic tanks are pumped out routinely. Currently, each homeowner has their own septic tank pumped out, and what we have learned is they're not all being pumped out on a routine basis, and some haven't been pumped out for a long time, which creates problems for the entire system. As the tanks are being pumped out, the contractor will assess the tanks to determine if they meet our standards, because there are standards that will relate to the septic tanks. And we, right now, of course, we don't have any standards, so we don't even know what problems are occurring with the septic tanks. Pumping out the tanks would be done every third year for annual costs in the order somewhere about $12,000 for the Canterbury Trails Association. The association would actually take over having a contractor pump out the tanks on a regular cycle. Homeowners would continue to be responsible for the costs of any repairs or replacement of the sewer system components on their property, including the septic tanks. We will contract with a company to determine what changes need to be made to the main line, including installing new cleanouts. Cost is dependent on the consultant recommendations, including the number of new cleanouts recommended. Right now, we only have one cleanout for the entire system. Cleanouts are important, because if you're going to do preventive maintenance, you have to have a cleanout to get into the line. Or if there's a problem with the line, you have to have somewhere to get into the line to unclog the line. But we only have one cleanout in the entire system, so obviously, that creates a problem for us for maintenance and preventive maintenance for the system. So, to do that, once we get our consultant report, determine how many cleanouts we have, then we would develop a plan of what, how soon we can actually implement the plan. And it probably takes several years. We won't be able financially afford it to all be done in the first year. So, to do this, obviously requires some funding and some financing. Homeowners would be responsible for paying increased dues to the Canterbury Trails Association so that association can contract to have the tanks pumped out every three years, which is what I mentioned earlier. This is a net zero cost to the homeowners, because hopefully, most have been paying to have their tanks cleaned out on a regular basis. So, if they're now having the association do it, then it's not a new cost for them. Homeowners would continue to be responsible for any repairs, replacement of septic tanks. That's the responsibility now, and that would continue to be the case. Through the waiver of some city fees, which we'll talk about, funding will be available to assess the condition of the tanks, contract for recommendations to improve the main line, and install cleanouts and make repairs to the main line. We believe we will have a high potential for success in passing a dues increase to maintain the sewer system if each homeowner's city sewer bill is decreased to support this So, you may not be fully aware of, and I wasn't, how the sewer bills in Independence are determined right now. So, let me just walk you through that, because that relates to what we're proposing. Currently, a fee based on the amount of water used during the first quarter of the year is, that fee is based upon the water usage, and then that determines your sewer bill for the rest of the year. This pays for the Little Blue Sewer District sewage treatment services, which we understand is approximately $12 per resident per month. Secondly, there is a monthly base charge that everybody pays throughout Independence of $16.59. Actually, that's our base charge. The base charge for everybody else is $18. And then the third component of your sewer bill is a $12 monthly regulatory compliance fee to pay the consent decree improvements. And that's $12 times 12, it's $144 for the year. And that was an EPA requirement back in the late 80s or 90s. So, lastly, there is a small state sewer connection fee, as we understand it. So, let's talk about each one of these components, so we understand how they work and where they've come from. All residents of Independence pay a monthly base charge. The base charge began by ordinance in 1989, and was set at $4.87 for Canterbury Trails and $6.22 for the rest of the city. So, we actually got a break when they set up this base charge back in the late 90s, late 80s. At that early date, the city recognized that Canterbury Trails should not be charged as much as other Independence residents. Since 1989, the base charge has increased to $16.59 for Canterbury Trails and $18 for the rest of Independence residents. The base charge for Canterbury Trails residents has increased over time by 341 percent, whereas the base charge for other Independence residents has only increased by 289 percent. And I have no idea why that differential has occurred, why we've been being charged more proportionately than what we at the very beginning. But therefore, now Canterbury Trails homeowners are paying a proportionately higher base charge than other city residents. Let's talk about the regulatory compliance fee. In 2009, the city entered into an agreement with the Environmental Protection Agency to make improvements to its sanitary sewer system in response to a consent decree against the city. The consent decree states, quote, "Approximately half of the city's collection system delivers wastewater to the Little Blue Valley Sewer District, and that part of the collection system is not subject to the consent decree." Now, we are connected to the Little Blue sewer system, but we're not part of that decree. So, even though Canterbury Trails is not subject to the consent decree, since we are connected to the Little Blue Valley Sewer District, however, the Canterbury Trails residents are being charged $12, approximately $12 a month for the regulatory, not approximately, we are being charged $12 a month for the regulatory fee, or $144 a year. So, when you, in trying to understand the Water Pollution Department expenses, basically, their budget includes expenses to cover engineering services, installing new lines, inspecting lines, making repairs, paying for the wastewater treatment, state and federal charges, administrative costs, and other. So, that's basically what your department has to do, and why they have to have money to do what they're doing. The city Water Pollution Department does not have to pay for Canterbury Trails' costs, the costs associated with engineering services, the costs of installing new lines, of inspecting lines, and making repairs. All those costs are borne by us, our association. They're not, those costs aren't borne by your water department, by your sewer department. The only Canterbury Trails related costs to the city are for the Little Blue Valley Sewer District sewage treatment services and administrative costs. Since our sewage goes into that district, then certainly, there's a cost that the city has to bear for the treatment. The Little Blue Valley Sewer District only treats affluence and does not incur any of So, here's our proposal. To pay for the assessment of the septic tanks, pay for a firm to make recommendations for improving the main line, to pay for repairs and installing cleanouts, here's what we request of the city. We requested the city waive the monthly base charge of $16.59 for the 91 residents of our subdivision. That's a request of $18,116 for an annual, as an annual waiver. In addition, we request the city waive the $12 monthly regulatory compliance charge for the 91 residents. That's, and that would be an annual waiver of a little over $13,000. So, the total waiver that we're requesting is $31,220, and that's for the entire subdivision. That's not per individual. Just a little bit over $30,000 is the waiver that we're requesting. So, this shows an actual current bill of one of our residents. This shows how the bill would change if the base charge and regulatory charge were waived. Even at the reduced rate, the $28.84 bill would be more than the $12 Little Blue Sewer System treatment charges. So, the city would still make money. We're requesting you to waive some of the fees, not all of them, but just some of them, and you would still get $28 on this typical type of example, and you would still have enough money to pay for the Little Blue charges and still make money on top of that. So, you might wonder, how would this proposal actually impact the Water Pollution Department finances? Well, the Independence Water Pollution Department has a reserve target of $12,700,000. As of August of this year, their financial sheet that's on the website shows that their reserves are 38, a little over $38 million, which is three times their reserve target. So, we believe that our request to, for you to waive a little over $31,000 would not substantially impact the Water Pollution Department finances. We believe that it's important that the city should expect accountability. To guarantee that the fees waived by the city are used to improve the Canterbury Trails sewer system, we will do the following. First, we will request the vote of the Canterbury Trails members to increase our annual dues, the amount of money that you are waiving, which is $343 per resident per year. Secondly, we will place the dues increase into a Canterbury Trails dedicated sewer fund, so that money can only be used for this purpose. And thirdly, Canterbury Trails will provide an annual report to the city on how the monies in the dedicated sewer fund were spent, and how the sewer system is being maintained So, we're concerned about the fairness of our current arrangement relationship with the city. Canterbury Trails residents are being charged by the city for services that are not provided to us or required of us in our neighborhood. Section 5.2 of the city charter states, quote, "Council members, board members, and employees shall get fair and equal treatment to every citizen," end quote. That's the city charter. Canterbury Trails residents are not receiving fair and equal treatment, given the fact that unlike other Independence residents, our sewer bills are uniquely disproportionate to the services provided. So, in conclusion, it is in the best interest of the city of Independence that Canterbury Trails has a well-functioning sewer system to maintain the health and safety of the residents of both Canterbury Trails and our neighbors around us. Canterbury Trails is willing to take actions to ensure that their sewer system is properly maintained in the future. It is proposed that Canterbury Trails and the city of Independence partner in structuring a reasonable financial arrangement that is fair to both parties and meets the intent of the city charter of being treated fairly. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Very good, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Land?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I may have some questions, but I'd like to hear from the staff first before I do that, I think, if that's all right.
Okay. Very good. Then we've got Councilmember Stewart and Councilmember McCandless on teams, is that correct?
I know for certain that Councilmember Stewart is there.
Okay.
Not able to see the rest of the screen from my seat.
Councilmember McCandless is there also.
Okay. Councilmember Fears, or, excuse me, Councilmember McCandless or Councilmember Stewart, any questions on your behalf before we go to staff's presentation?
Like Jared, like Councilmember Fears, I'd like to hear from staff first. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do that. Mr. City Manager, I'll turn it over to you and let you proceed.
Yes, I'll ask Assistant City Manager and Director of Municipal Services Lisa Reynolds to come share staff's perspective on this.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Lisa Reynolds, Assistant City Manager and Director of Municipal Services. We do appreciate Canterbury Trails Homeowners Association taking the time to work on this and try and come up with a somewhat creative solution to the problem. The issue, the primary issue for staff is always, actually, one of the things that Mr. Land mentioned is really fairness. And this is probably a speech that I know other staff gets sick of hearing from me, but if we do for one, we have to be able to do for all. So, one of our primary concerns is if we waive sewer fees for one group, then we have to be willing to look at every single group that comes forward saying, you know, I have this financial hardship or this financial hardship, and I can't fix my lateral, or our subdivision is aging, and we want to do this, and so we would like the same thing. When we get into that situation, then all the revenue, you know, there's a potential for huge revenue impact to the sewer fund. I would like to correct a couple of things about our sewer rates, or just provide a little more clarification. There are four components to our rates. The state connection fee is a 48 cents charge annually, one time a year, 48 cents to every account. The base charge is the environmental compliance fee is how it shows up on the bill, and that's the $12 fee that is used to pay the debt service on the consent decree. This is going back several years. We entered into the consent decree in roughly 2009, I believe, and it was ending really when I started here with the city back in 2015, 2016. It started at $3 and it stair-stepped up to the 12, which is where it remains flat-lined until that debt service has been completed, which I believe the last issue is still, maybe 2042, still several years to go in that. But those were for citywide capacity updates as well as treatment. So, to Mr. Land's point, yes, a lot of that was for treatment and additional storage and things like that for wet weather events, but it was also capacity issues system-wide. So, it wasn't just, it was, there was work done in every district to the sewer system, and so the most equitable way to spread that cost was to charge every customer. So, residential, commercial, everybody pays that same flat fee every month. And then we have the base charge, which is the portion of the rates that are meant to fund the collection system, the actual infrastructure in the ground. And then the volume piece, based on how much water you use, you pay the volume portion of your bill, and that is treatment-related. So, those would be all the costs for the actual treatment of the wastewater. Now, we do some of that treatment in the city at Rock Creek Treatment Facility, and then, as mentioned, a large portion of flows citywide goes to Little Blue Valley Sewer District. One point of correction, no single entity, no single private entity, i.e. subdivision or any other political subdivision of any kind, flows directly to Little Blue. Little Blue was created by ordinance, is comprised of 13 different entities, all cities or Lake City entities like that. There are no just single subdivisions flowing straight to them. So, Canterbury flows, as mentioned, there's a common lateral. That common lateral feeds into our collection system, our sewer collection system, that is then metered through the Borough Metering Station, and that's where we come up with how much volume was put through for that whole watershed, and we pay accordingly to Little Blue Valley Sewer. And the total bill to Little Blue is millions and millions of dollars every year, and those costs continue to escalate like everything else does. We're roughly at about $8 million a year for Little Blue right now. So, do you have questions first on the rate piece? Anyone?
I think I do.
Okay.
So, talk just a little bit more about the base fee. That base fee is for everybody in the entire city, correct?
The base fee is if you use no water, this is the base rate that you would pay for service connection.
And that's for connecting, that's for helping to maintain the entire system all the way to Little Blue Valley Sewer District.
Yes, the entire citywide sanitary collection system. And that's the pipeline in the ground.
Right.
That's the base charge. And then the treatment portion and the treatment processes, or Little Blue's portion, is in the volume charge.
Okay. And while you're on the fee part, any comments relative to the difference between what Canterbury And while you're on the fee part, any comments relative to the difference between what Canterbury people pay versus what other, you know, someone that would, you know, my house goes straight to the sewer, so, you know, I pay more than what they pay. But Garland talked about a difference in the increase over the years, and any insight you can give us on that?
So all utility rates have gone up over the years. I believe 1989 was the first discussion I found record of referencing the Canterbury Trails sewer fees. And at the time, it was, and I have the letter from Dick Champion, who was the director at the time, and stating that their base charge would be somewhat reduced, and it has remained reduced over all this time. $16 and change is what they pay for a base charge, and the standard base charge citywide is $18 currently.
And so other neighborhoods that would be in a similar scenario would pay that same thing that Canterbury pays?
No, they pay 18, they pay more.
Oh, they would pay more, okay, all right. Okay, I think that's all I got for now.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else have other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Yeah, Ms. Reynolds, with the regulatory compliance fee of 2009, is that when the federal government came in and really looked at all the municipalities and you need to bring your systems to an upgrade level?
Yes.
Is that timeframe what I'm talking about?
Yes, it was. And we actually were really successful with our consent decree and able to complete all of the requirements of that within a seven or eight-year period. But of course, the cost of doing that was in a very small window of time. It was roughly $90 million in debt that was issued as part of the consent decree, and it was issued over three bond issuances, all 20 and 30-year life.
So on a scroll moment, when Kansas City got hit by that, they were into billions, if I remember.
They absolutely are, and they will be working on that one for quite some time to come.
Okay.
Yes. And I will say also about the comment about our fund balance being what it is, because we took so much debt with the consent decree, we have since that time cash-funded all of our CIP programs, so any capital project is cash-funded. Sometimes some of those projects are large. For instance, when we went to the lime stabilization process that replaced our old incinerator, we had to save money for three years effectively. So our fund balance looks artificially elevated, when in fact there are plans for all of those capital funds. And as you all know, you see the capital document every year, we have a six-year capital plan that takes those dollars, and anybody that's listened to me drone on about budget for the last several years has heard the plight of the sewer fund and that we actually project to be going toward the negative side in fiscal year '28, '29.
Thank you.
To paint bright and sunshiny.
One follow-up question on the consent decree part. Mr. Land said that the area that fed into the Little Blue Valley Sewer District did not apply to that consent decree. Is that correct, or was that, talk about that if you could?
So, yes, and, yes, there are several subdivisions throughout town that were not upsized in any way. I don't know that, you know, we'll take, we'll take mine. Nottingham Estates, I don't know that there, I don't think there was any consent decree work that was done in that subdivision. What was decided, again, this is before my time, but heard part of the discussions, what was decided at the time was really the only fair and equitable way to divide that out was, especially with a large sum, was divided across every account. So again, commercial, residential, doesn't matter. And the thought was that the capacity improvements were done throughout the city, so whether you're a resident and your house may not have been directly affected, but I use this park, I use this business, those flows feed into lines that were upsized and impacted by the consent decree. So again, that was a citywide consent decree that impacted every single district in the city. So that was, the determination was just to spread it out over every single account. I can, just as far as a little bit of additional information, not related to rates so much, but it's been brought up that this is, yes, this is absolutely a unique situation. They are the only subdivision that pays that reduced base rate. They are the only known system that has septic tanks that aren't really septic tanks. As was mentioned, septic tanks usually have a lateral field, they don't daylight into any kind of sewer collection system. So it's unique across the board. I had gotten a question earlier, just how many, about how many septic systems we have in town? We have roughly 671 septic systems. However, not all of those have sewer available. So sewer service being deemed available means I can hook to it if I choose to, that is the trigger to start paying sewer fees. So for the ones that have sewer available and choose not to hook up, there are 27 of those outside of Canterbury Trails and the 90 homes there, just for comparison. I was asked that question by a councilperson, so just so you all have the same information. And our other, really the other staff concern, aside from just fairness and being able to, if we're going to apply it to one, we have to be able to apply it to all, is in this plan, there's really no compliance mechanism, and there's no enforcement mechanism, and there's no guarantee that once the people that are concerned about this now, if they were to move or anything, you know, if those people are no longer players, what is there to ensure that that work happens? What is there to ensure that the HOA does vote to say, yes, I'm willing to increase for this, this project? This doesn't impact every home. And so maybe it's different in the subdivision, but we run into with lots of capital projects throughout town. My neighbor has a problem, but I don't. This is common among easements. I don't, I don't care about giving you an easement because it doesn't impact me. Somebody that doesn't have a septic problem might not care or want to pay more or put any money toward a septic issue because it doesn't impact them today. So that's, there's just, there's no mechanism for insurance or compliance in this plan. What else can I answer from a staff perspective?
Anybody else other, pardon me, any other questions? From this perspective, and this is not related directly to the sewer system, but we don't have to maintain the streets, the lights, or anything like that in Canterbury Trails, do we? Because they do all of that.
We do not, it's all, it's private.
And, you know, from my perspective, I don't know if this is a question more of a comment, I'd just like to make sure that we do what we can to help preserve the Canterbury Trails as a, you know, upscale homeowners association and make it work, so, from that perspective. And then, so we've collected the sewer fees for all these years, so did they just go into the sewer fund at that point?
They do go into the sewer fund, and again, they don't dump directly into Little Blue Valley Sewer District, they feed into our collection system. That collection system does have to be maintained, and that's why for any, for any septic system, even the septic systems outside of Canterbury, they pay sewer fees if sewer is available because of, regardless of whether they hook up, that sewer still needs to be maintained at a cost, and so to support that cost, sewer fees are charged.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have other questions? Okay. Very good.
Check with one law.
Yep, and, thank you. Councilmember McCandless or Councilmember Stewart?
I had a question for Mr. Land, but I think some of those were answered in Ms. Reynolds' presentation. My, just for clarification, and Ms. Reynolds may be able to answer this, I wasn't clear on Mr. Land's presentation whether those dollars, they were expecting to have their fees waived forever, or if they had a timeline in which they thought their repairs would be completed.
I'll let Mr. Land answer that one.
Thank you.
That's a good question, and I've thought about it myself. We don't know what our total cost will be to upgrade the system, how many cleanouts we need to have and so forth. Once we have that budget in mind from the consultant, then we will, we can come back to you and have that discussion. Do we just need this money for three years, five years, 10 years, who knows? But I think that we ought to have that discussion. I think we shouldn't be collecting fees beyond what we need. And so, but right now, I can't give a direct answer as to how long that would be until we get our consultant report back as to how we're going to upgrade the main lines. I would also mention, there was concern that how can we ensure that the homeowners will pay their dues in effect? We have a situation right now, that our dues structure covers two, three main things. First is the basic dues of the association, like any association would have. Then we have, part of our dues goes into maintaining the streets, because they are our streets. So we pay a specific amount for maintenance of the streets, and that goes into a dedicated street fund. Same type of thing as what we're suggesting here, a dedicated sewer fund. And then we have another component of our, of our fees that we pay to have our trash hauled by a single provider, and we pay the association to contract with a provider. So if somebody doesn't pay their homeowner's association, then the association takes them to court and puts a lien on their house. So the same thing would happen here. If for some reason somebody doesn't pay to have their sewer tank cleaned out with the new dues structure, then a lien would be placed on their house, the new homeowner that buys the house will have to pay off that lien. So that's how we can ensure compliance with any of our homeowner's fees.
Very good. Anyone else have other questions? Mr. Land, thank you. Mr. City Manager, any follow-up on that discussion?
I don't have any other information to share tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Would that then bring us to the second agenda item, traffic study preservation, or, excuse me, presentation?
And for that item, I will ask our city engineer, Alex Lopez, to come kick us off.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, members of the council. Like Zach said, I'm Alex Lopez, I'm our city engineer, and today my team and I are here to present on the Nolan Road multimodal corridor improvements project. So today's presentation will be divided into three main parts. The first part being, we'll be going over the project's goals, vision, and resources. The second part will present the traffic study, our key findings, and our recommendations based on the data we've obtained in the traffic study. And finally, we'll illustrate the recommended configurations along Nolan Road from Highway 24 to Fair Street, before running a traffic simulation and opening up the floor for questions. So before we get started here, we've placed in front of you all two documents. The first document being a copy of the presentation itself, so you can follow along, that's the one with the yellow or orange color in the back. And then the second document is the traffic study document itself, that's the one with the blue on the back. So now I will turn it over to our senior engineer and project manager, Adi Smadi, to speak on the first part of the presentation.
Hello, everyone. And, well, before starting on this, I wanted kinda to just give an overview of where we started and why we are where we are today. So this project was first introduced late 2021, early 2022, and the main motive for this study was the Nolan revitalization, a plan which was completed as part of the Imagine Independence 2040, which we can, we can see it at the top-right corner, where all the kinda, the commercial hub south of 23rd Street is planned to be revitalized between now and 2040, as shown in this figure. Therefore, this project was introduced to improve safety and accessibility while providing multimodal transportation options, connecting the residential neighborhoods north of 23rd Street with the commercial hub that will be revitalized between now and 2040, just south of 23rd Street. Now, to help achieve the project goals, the city has allocated a total of $14 million to deliver this project. This will be coming from two main sources. The first and foremost source is Federal Highway Administration, RACE grant. The city was awarded in 2022 a total of $10.16 million in RACE grant from the Federal Highway Administration, and the rest comes from street sale taxes, and that will be the city match. Now, these $14 million are divided as follows, a total of 1 point, approximately 1.3 million will go towards the engineering phase, and that includes all design activities, and then 0.8 million are allocated towards right-of-way activities, and the rest will go towards construction activities. Overall, this project will be delivered over six years, starting 2022, and it's expected to be delivered by 2028. Now, the organizational structure of this project, of the team members that were allocated on this project is shown just on the right-side figure here. Now, since the city was a direct recipient for this grant rather than being awarded as sub-recipient through MoDOT, the city kinda administer and coordinate all project-related activities internally. So we report directly to Brian Evans, who is the Federal Highway Administration Project Lead, and then internally here, as Alex alluded, I kinda manage the project activities internally. And then we selected, the city has selected Olson Associates as the engineer of record on this project, where Brian Plezard kinda serves as the project manager. And the rest of the staff are shown on the hierarchy here. I think that was it for the first part. I'm gonna hand it over now for Olson to go over the traffic study.
Sorry? Yeah, I'm Jeremy Stratz with Olson. I've been doing traffic engineering for about 14 years now, and I grew up in Independence, so I think this was a really project that was near and dear to me. Went to high school at Truman High School, and so just, just south of the project area. So very excited to kinda talk a little bit about what we found in here. First part of the project, I think Adi gave a really good overview of what the project entailed, but it reviews Nolan Road and how it operates today, see if there's any improvements that can be made in coordination with the RACE grant funding that was received and allocated to the project. First step in that is really to develop a traffic impact study to understand how the road's being used today, what the road's makeup is, how, how many vehicles and users are traveling on the road today. So to look at that, this is kind of an overview of the conditions we reviewed in the traffic study. So looking at the existing conditions, best practices of how we can make improvements to this corridor to improve safety and operational efficiency. And then after taking a look at those existing conditions and best practices, looking at alternatives analysis, and then four alternative analysis, or four scenarios were reviewed to determine kinda how these conditions look, including existing, existing with the improvements made, future 2035 and 2045 no-build conditions, as well as future build conditions for those same design years. Kind of the first part that I talked about was understanding how the corridor is used today. That includes a kind of robust data collection effort, so looking at crash patterns from the last most, from the last five years of complete data, reviewing the existing roadway configuration, volumes, pedestrian users, bicyclist users, and then understanding how that transit system functions today. Kind of first item to summarize really is how the corridor functions within, in terms of safety. The best way to do that is to compare the roadway network to statewide average conditions for similar types of facilities, and then just kind of understand where this corridor and system ranks compared to similar facilities across the state. Really, there's, there's a few key highlights of this, you know, things that pop out to us are the crash patterns at 23rd and Fair, where there's too closely spaced signals and a lot of traffic is facilitated through specifically that 23rd Street intersection. And then where there's crashes that have involved serious injuries, fatal injuries, those types of things. There were three fatal corridor, or crashes that happened along the corridor during the study period. All of those were attributed to factors kind of outside of the roadway network, so not necessarily attributed to any roadway features specifically. But there were some, some crashes that we explored a little bit deeper at specific locations, including some crashes that occurred around that railroad crossing. I know it's a low-frequency crossing there, but the rail lines are specifically concerned with that area as well, especially if we add facilities to the corridor. if we add facilities to the corridor. So those things I think you'll find later.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Can you go back to the last slide? I'm sorry, Mr. Stratz?
Sure.
So as I'm reading on the, on the sheet here, so 24 Highway has 32,000, approximately 22,000 cars per day. Then as I'm reading, so from 24 to St. Charles, that'll be the 13,000. Okay, then goes down from there. Okay.
So that's, that's average daily traffic. That's the number of vehicles that enter that intersection across all four legs of the intersection throughout a typical day. So that would be, as you see, it kind of fluctuates as you go up and down the corridor because although the Nolan Road carries, rather, and maybe the next slide will illustrate that a little bit better. Nolan Road carries anywhere from 12,000 to almost 20,000 vehicles a day. It decreases as you extend north along the corridor. So the northern area of the corridor between Highway 24 and about Truman Road carries about 12,000 vehicles a day, and then it increases to about 18,000 vehicles a day as you move south along the corridor towards 23rd Street. I think that that's, so as you kind of relate that back to the previous slide, you can kinda tell, you can infer how much side-street traffic each of those pro-streets carry based on kind of that rough number. Yeah, so then that next piece is just kinda continuing that, understanding the context, a little bit more of the roadway network, how it functions today, how many vehicles it travel, how many vehicles it carries throughout the day, what are the speeds that cars are driving on that road, that roadway network. What's the driveway density like? How many drives there are per mile is one way we look at that as traffic engineers, to determine how much potential for conflict there are in a section. And so when, we kind of keep those in the back of our minds when we're looking at the crash patterns as well, and the crash frequency. So the second piece of that was we gathered one week's worth of vehicle count information to be able to generate these volumes. And then we typically analyzed the worst-case conditions. So we looked at the AM, the morning peak conditions, and the afternoon peak conditions. Again, we've studied, I think, a week late May was when we gathered the traffic count information of 2024 earlier this year. There was an event going on, on Friday night at the high school. I think it was centered around graduation around that time. But the typical peak periods were found to actually be on a Thursday between 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning and 3:50, or 3:30 to, to 5:30 in the evening. So we focused our analysis periods on those two periods. As Adi mentioned, there's a lot of history along the corridor and throughout the city. We reviewed a conglomerate of the existing studies that have taken place, from the comp plan to Nolan Now. Some of the things that kinda popped out to us that are in the direct vicinity of this project and could be, have some crossover, were the Truman Connected Plan, and the National Historic Trail Retracement Plan, as well as the Nolan Now Revitalization Plans. All of those put a strong emphasis on the need for sidewalks, pedestrian safety, and multi-use trail systems to be added or, or at least considered when we're reviewing improvements along the corridor. The Truman Connected Plan actually overlapped with this study a little bit for that northern section of Nolan Road. And a part that, that those two plans really kind of promote is maybe considering some alternative bicycle facilities along adjacent north-south corridors of either Main Street or Liberty Street, I think that were the outcomes of those studies. So again, just, just things to kinda keep in the back of our mind as we're kinda rolling through this. Another piece of the study was to review best practices. So how are we able to best promote safety and accessibility throughout the corridor network, whether that be through multi-use trails, side paths, sidewalk improvements, bike lanes on facility or off facility, how to, the influence of buffer space get kind of incorporated into those recommendations. There's a lot of guidance out there, so we kinda provided some high-level summaries in the report and on the slide. The, so then kind of taking all that information into consideration and the existing operations along the corridor, we developed some alternatives to be reviewed and refined. That way, we could run through those, the analysis scenarios that we mentioned earlier for the AM and PM peak period conditions. Some of the things to, that we kind of use to help guide some of our recommendations would be that high volumes of traffic along the south side of the corridor really lead to congestion and safety impacts, or really challenges if we're trying to introduce facilities on the roadway. So that, that kind of helped lead some of that. Recommendations that we ultimately fell upon, there is available capacity along the northern piece of the roadway network where there's, Nolan Road carries about 12,000 vehicles per day. And then other things were the driveway density, speeds along the corridor, vehicles traveling about the speed limit there throughout the corridor network. And ultimately, we reviewed conditions for a lane reconfiguration scenario along Nolan Road from a five-lane condition to a three-lane condition with buffered bike lanes from that northern intersection of Highway 24 to almost Truman Road, right where the transit facility is over at White Oak, to kind of tie into the recommendations of the Truman Connected Plan. And analyzed operational analysis with those conditions in place and without those conditions in place. Kind of this slide summarizes a little bit of the overall intersection level of service. So the level of service is a measure of driver acceptance for delay associated with those signalized intersections, with Level Service A being kind of free-flow conditions, and Level Service F being kind of breakdown or, or a high-delay condition. With these recommendations in place, through the design year of 2045, you can see there's a small degradation near the Truman Road intersection, but overall, all of the signalized study intersections are anticipated to continue to operate at or near existing conditions with improvements in place. So kind of as a conclusion slide, the project meets the goals of the Raise Grant funding opportunities to improve safety, equitable access, improve quality of life for users along the corridor, and, and promote these sustainable goals for the project. Next, I think that we'll run through maybe some corridor visualizations of that along Nolan Road as we move from, I think, north to south. I'll pass it off to Brian. And then if you guys have some questions, we can follow up. Not high level. I think this slide, or this exhibit is included with one of your guys' packets, I believe, and within the study.
So we're talking about this blue document. So it's a traffic study report. If you go towards the end, there are two exhibits. The last one is project schedule, and that kind of shows in detail the project schedule to be covered this way. And the second to the last is the exhibit's very crispy that Jeremy's working on.
Yeah, so those are more schematic exhibits that depict the recommendations of the traffic impact study. Kind of moving from north to south, it would be, well, corridor-wide, we'll start there, would be to add a multi-use trail on the west side of Nolan Road. That would be an eight-to-10-foot sidewalk or side path that could be accessible to all modes of traffic, pedestrians, scooters, bicyclists, and maybe less confident cyclists, so to speak. And sidewalk improvements on the east side to improve connectivity. The, the lane reconfiguration would run from Highway 24 intersection to approximately the White Oak intersection, maybe just north of there. And that would be going from a five-lane section to a three-lane section. So one northbound lane, one southbound lane, and a left, a two-way left-turn lane, or dedicated left-turn lanes where necessary to facilitate left-turn traffic. In that lane reconfiguration section, we would be proposing to add dedicated bicycle facilities for both directions with buffered space in between to make use of the existing typical section that goes through there. And then as you move south towards Truman, the typical section would still be proposed to remain as a five-lane facility due to the number of driveways throughout those sections and the high volume of traffic, especially as we move further south to Truman Road. But the multi-use trail on the west side of Nolan and the sidewalk improvements on the east side would continue. Though, the one other improvement area that we mentioned that kind of goes along with the lane reconfiguration would be to adjust the speed limits along Nolan Road between Truman and Highway 24, from 40 miles an hour down to 35. And I think there were some recommendations for, this is kind of in conjunction with some back-and-forth with the rail facilities for advanced signal, or an additional signal component at the intersection of Walnut to improve safety there, so we can stop vehicle traffic short of the rail crossing, and there's not the potential for queuing across that rail line. That was something that was mentioned.
Good evening, Brian Blizzard. I'll be, thinking Jeremy is traffic guy, and I'm kinda more the geometrics and, and road guy. So the vision of this was to, to provide safe modes of transportation for everybody. So that was kind of the underlying goal of this project, is people without a vehicle, let's make this safe to travel up and down the corridor. First step in that was determining, on the roadway, can we do that with the amount of traffic that's out there? That's why Jeremy's done the traffic study. Now, my specialty takes over, and we kinda try to, how do we make this fit into the real world? So moving ahead, kinda with the concurrence of the city, this is the kind of configurations that we were, Jeremy mentioned, kinda put into the real world. So this is Nolan Road, basically from here up to 24, Truman up to 24, with this three-lane configuration, a two-way left-turn lane in the middle, one lane for north and south vehicles. That buffered bike lane, the buffer, I'm not sure if you guys are up to speed with what that means, but that means there's a little bit of a buffer area between the roadway and the bicycle, make that a little safer. And with bikes on the roadway, as Jeremy mentioned, one recommendation on this would be to reduce the speed limit to 35 miles an hour to be a little safer. And then as you mentioned, trail on the west side and a sidewalk on the east side. All of these visualizations, you're looking north, so west is on the left side, east is on the right side.
Mr. Mayor? Please proceed.
Well, Mr. Blizzard, I'd give you kudos for, number one, for using the, kinda the true streetscape here to, for us to get the better understanding for, for though that's the auto repair, auto body repair place there. Then all the way up, up to the north side is, or the north side is the south side furniture. So kudos to you for.
Yeah, I deal with the real world. I don't deal with the hypotheticals. Okay. So that, that again is from Truman up to 24. Next section is kind of the transition area is what I call it. So we've got the three-lane section from, from Truman up to 24. This is the area from Truman down to around Walnut where that railroad crossing is. So this area is, is pretty tight. There's, there's not much room to work here. You'll notice the sidewalk and the trail are right on the back curb. Again, as we move through this, these are conceptual, so as we get in, get into more detail, those, those could move a little bit. But this in general is what we think that section would look like. Pretty much roadway stays the same as it is today. We may take the, the lanes from like a 12-foot down to 11-foot. Drivers don't really notice anything until you get like 10, 10 and a half feet or below. That feels like a normal roadway section to most drivers. We measured roadway widths up and down Nolan Road. There are some areas that are already 11 feet. There's a lot that are 12, but 11 feet fits within the corridor. See. In this section, again, like Jeremy said, there, there is that railroad crossing. There's gonna be a lot of coordination between now and when this project gets built with the railroad. They put a lot of restrictions on what you can do and what you can't do on their right away. We show the, the trail at the sidewalk. There's, there's a really good chance that sidewalk is gonna have a break on that east side across the railroad track. We wanna get the walkers, bikers, a safe way across that railroad. It probably won't be on both sides. We'll probably have to pick one side and, and do one safe crossing for them. And then the last one is, this is south of Walnut. You can tell where the cemetery is. It's in that area. And this is kind of the, the general conceptual layout of that section. Again, pretty much the same configuration, a divided four-lane. If you look way in the distance, you can see where the turn lane is, kind of the same turn lanes that'll be out there today. Main difference is a good, consistent sidewalk on the east side, a good consistent trail would be a goal on the west side. So that's kind of the conceptual, how we envision it looking. Like I said, we're a long ways from being final in design, but this is kind of with the buy-off of the city, this is where we're gonna proceed with design. Last slide I want to go over is kind of the schedule. See, kinda towards the, end of 2024, we're right at that council presentation. So up to this point, we had a project kickoff. We've done a ton of data collection and a ton of study. So did a complete survey of the project. We've looked at all the storm sewer, sent, sent people out to video all the storm sewer, did a, did a study, and we've got that railroad concept started. From now until the end of 2025 or so, the main goal is to get preliminary plans done, environmental clearance, and, there's three things. Oh, and public involvement. Those three things are what we need to get to the point where we can go ahead and start acquiring right away for the project. That last year will be getting the right-of-way acquired, getting the final railroad, informing the public of what's coming, and then getting the plans out to bid, and ultimately getting started in construction in 2026. So with that, I think we'll open it up to questions. And this is kind of a video of the traffic simulation on what Jeremy analyzed. It kinda shows what the, what the intersections will look like, traffic flow under the built conditions.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if you guys have any questions on this, I do deal in the real world as well. It's just 2D instead of 3D. But this would be the 2045 conditions with the, with the build conditions in place. At the Highway 24 intersection, we'd propose to keep the existing northbound right-turn lane. And so you'd have a little bit of separation or mixing area of where, where the cyclists would kind of come through. And then if, I think that the simulation just kind of slowly moves from the north side to the south side of the corridor. I try to pause at every intersection for at least one, like, complete service of the intersection at, at each one of the locations. And this is like, I think, four times speed, so that it's kinda moving a little bit along.
Not only this, if I may add, so, this, oh, sorry. Yeah, so if I may add, now, this simulation basically mimics an actual kind of semi-real condition, where we took the traffic volumes from today's numbers, and then Jeremy factored in a growth factor that is based on the kind of the standards and codes adopted in this area. And that way, we were able to obtain the, the number or the expected number of vehicles that will be using the corridor in the year 2045, and that's like 20 years in the horizon. So it truly can be, can be depicted as like an actual condition basically in the future, with the proposed improvements to help us kinda understand how the network will perform, and what impacts will this proposed improvement have.
Okay. Anyone else have other questions? Please proceed.
Go ahead. So one question that I did have, on the, the view between, I think you said Walnut to Fair, where there was a median, would there be turn lanes there? Or, your picture didn't show any turn lanes, so I just didn't know.
Yeah, if, it's pretty small, but it's way at the end of the, you can kinda see behind that street light. It does show a turn lane there.
I kinda do see that now that you mention it, yeah.
Yeah, the simulation also shows that there. We're leaving all of the turn lanes exactly as they're configured today.
Okay. All right. That was one question. I, you know, I, I guess, there was a lot of- I, you know, I, I guess, there was a lot of concern that I heard, you know, early on when, when before, before we did anything, there was a lot of concern that, from the community, and I'm, I'm really pleased with what I see here in terms of, you know, trying to achieve the goals, so I'm, I'm happy with what I see.
Thank you so much. Anything else? Please proceed.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Councilman Fears, I'm, I'm pretty happy too with, with the way things have shaken out with the concerns and stuff that I think that we were all getting over the past probably 12 months or so. So going up to 24 Highway in Nolan, going north, taking a right on, on, going east, will there's, will it be, will there be a dedicated turn lane for that to help with that traffic flow?
Yes, the anticipation would be, and I don't know, maybe it's better illustrated in the kind of, the exhibit that I have. Yeah, I guess the, the visualization kind of shows it as well, but none of them really showed, depict Brian's type, real world type condition, but really what it would look like would be a northbound left, a single through, through movement, and then a dedicated right turn lane. So the, right now, there's, I, there is, there's five lanes through that section right now, I believe, and we would be proposing to take, take away a couple of those lanes to provide those conditions. I think the northbound right turn lane is a benefit, there, net benefit there, I guess, for capacity wise. The other thing we didn't quite mention is, you know, what happens to cyclist and how did that, I never really tied back in the Truman Connected Corridor Plan or National Historic Trail Retracement Plan or the Downtown Revitalization Plan, but that, through that Truman Connected Plan, that, that plan shows to add a dedicated bicycle facility, a two-way bike facility, really kind of where it inflects with our project is near White Oak and Main Street, and then as well, that's proposed to go south down Main Street. The, the reason why our proposed conditions kind of lead into that and stop our bike facilities north of Truman, that's to get them across to White Oak to use that cycle track facility south towards Main, and then ultimately, they can carry, continue to carry south on Main, or I think Liberty was also another corridor that was mentioned. These are lower volume, lower speed streets that are much more akin to cyclist. I mean, that's, if that's where, if you want to bike and bike safely, that's, that's more the street that you'd want to be on versus Nolan Road, which is carrying, you know, almost 20,000 vehicles a day with a speed of 40 miles an hour. So that speed differential, that volume disparity, I think that those streets are more kind of conducive to cycling activities. Not to say that, that, you know, the multi-use trail will facilitate some of that on Nolan Road itself so that we can maintain access to the transit facilities and, and that transit hub, I guess, off Truman, but just wanted to mention that as well.
So continuing the conversation, going south, when we're at South Side Furniture, when they unload their trucks, they block, they back in and they usually block one lane if, of traffic. Was that considered or discussed with them? As, and I don't know how frequently they load and unload, but you can see their dock, it's, it's facing Nolan.
Yeah.
I'd say, in general, no, we haven't got that much detail yet. There, that, through that area, the roadway's going to narrow up a little bit, so there's going to be some area to work with there. Where their right away is, where their operations are, what they're, how they're unloading, you know, we can, there are things we can do during design to accommodate something a little safer, probably, but it'll take some back and forth and, and knowing exactly where their limits are, the, the project could include some reconfiguration of their parking lot or entrances to where maybe they have an entrance that's further south, so in their dock, they don't pull directly in, they pull in and give themselves some more area.
It's pretty unique right there.
Yeah, it's, I actually looked at it on Street View today and, and, you know, do I have a, the answer right now? No, but I think there's room to work there.
Yeah, I would say same type of discussion, but different when we're looking at the auto body shop with tow trucks and different facilities right there as they're bringing vehicles in for, for work to have those conversations. Because if we're going to have the, the buffer between the bike and the vehicles, then those may have to be adjusted for their parking lot possibly, but that's a conversation.
Body shop's a lot closer, and it's, but, you know, first off, first goal, let's get something where it's accommodating a wheelchair to get through there. Some of that may be restricting some of their places where it's not just a wide open sea of concrete. Maybe we limit them to their, their bays at least. I did look at that up on Street View again today. They have some access on the backside. Maybe we can work with them to limit some of those, but again, I don't, I haven't looked through in detail yet.
If I may add, so as Brian mentioned throughout the presentation, there will be multiple public meetings as well, and as part of those public meetings, we will make sure, this is a really excellent point, we just missed it, so in all those public meetings, we usually just issue mail invitations for all the residents along the corridor as well as the businesses, and it's really a good point, we'll make sure to focus on those specifically like two businesses to ensure kind of entrances kind of meet their needs and there is enough storage capacity in front of their stores, but it's really excellent point, let's take it in great account as well.
Thank you. So as we're going, going south, dealing with the railroad, so you'll have two railroad crossings. How do you anticipate those conversations going? And I'm sure you've had the experience that we all have had with them.
Yeah, railroads are fun. Olson has a dedicated staff that deals with nothing but railroad and, and interacting with them, so they're already on board, we've already submitted kind of some concepts that we're thinking about just to get it on their radar. They're going to come back and probably say, you can't do this one, you can't do this one, you can't do that one. And then we'll work with them, you know, there's, I've already learned a lot on what, you know, their, their signs are very important to them, they've got a billboard sign there on the railroad, we're not going to be allowed to touch that probably. If you get so far off of the roadway, you've got to have a dedicated crossing for a trail or a sidewalk with a, with a bar. So, you know, there's, there's lots of things that are going to be coordinated with, but it's just a process, you know, there's a huge flow chart on their coordination guidelines on how you work through it, and we're on step two or three out of 16, so.
So you already had that, so good job on that.
We also executed the agreement with the railroad agency, basically, to, they sent us a scope for their services to do the reviews and approvals on this project, and the city also reviewed it along with Olson's railroad staff, and we executed that agreement with the railroad, and now they are on board with us. So it's just, as Brian mentioned, a matter of time, matter of coordination. The more we have the product to present, the more meetings we'll have with them, and, but the process already kicked off.
So just for, so from my understanding, so from White Oak north to Fair, we'll have the, the four lanes, then we'll have the, the multimodal zone.
The existing configuration, plus, we will, we will, of course, reconstruct the sidewalks to become ADA compliant on the east side. On the west side, as Jeremy mentioned, we will be providing a shared use trail basically along the entire property.
Okay. Once we get to the medians, as Councilman Fears was discussing, in the picture, it showed grass. Is that just, we just threw that grass in there as just as a space filler, or, or will we have, maybe to you, Mr. City Manager, new medians that deserve, they deserve new medians if we're going to keep those there?
I'll, I'll just add, and this is probably best for a different study session, but I know in 2025, the Nolan Road Community Improvement District is really intending to amplify a lot of their projects of the last several years for them have been about planning, and I met with that group last week, and I think 2025, they're really hoping and see themselves more on the implementation and execution side, and some of their early concepts do involve some thought process about addressing those medians, I will say. The architect working with Nolan Road CID is also from Olson, so I think that will provide some nice synergy and integration of this project with the work that that, that bunch is wanting to do with their resources as well.
That's good, good to know, thank you. With that, with, with the light poles, we're going to do a, a refresh, we may as well take a, a deep dive and, and look to see how the continuity of what's taking place, that is going to be taking place on the square, how we can have some continuity all along I believe that's it for me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you for all the hard work, and, and I guess the public engagement will be coming later, so we'll be looking forward to, to that.
One last, so guys, please, if you, if you would like to review the reports, the presentation, you have any comments you would like us to consider them further, by all means, just send them to us and we will be happy to update them as needed. Still, there was be, there will be a public meeting, and we will not be approving the traffic study until we finalize all those steps, basically.
Okay, well, thank you.
It's like there is a hand raised. There's somebody online?
Yes, Councilmember Stewart or Councilmember McCandless, any questions?
I do have two questions. First, I, I get this question frequently, which is, if you're going to slow down traffic, will we be careful to synchronize the lights so that if I'm proceeding at the speed limit, I'm going to be able to have a smooth transition through multiple intersections? That was question one. Question two is, I, I think there's a lot of concern around William Crispin pickup/dropoff, and so because I don't have the documents in front of me, can you just walk me through how you think that the traffic flow is going to work around William Crispin? So, thank you.
Sure. Two things, so on your first question, we did coordinate with Operation Greenlight, which is a division of the Mid-America Regional Council that manages the traffic signal timings along Nolan Road. I believe that they readtime the corridor in 20, maybe 2022, just a couple of years ago, the, the new signal timings were put out. So yeah, absolutely, as we move forward with the process, you know, as we, if we make changes to the geometric configurations or speed limits, they'll be involved with the process and, and be kind of in step with making adjustments to traffic signal timings to either accommodate capacity changes or speed changes along the corridor. And then to answer your second question, the pickup time was, was a part of the, is it, I guess, included within the typical morning operational conditions? The afternoon dropoff condition is a little bit prior to the typical PM peak period, what we would call it, that was included in the analysis. But the, the school dropoff period is probably more critical for the morning peak, and I don't anticipate, actually, I think it might make things a little bit smoother by having just a single northbound lane approaching Highway 24 at there rather than two northbound through lanes that kind of get funneled into one shortly after the intersection. So looking at that, I think that might make some improvements to safety and, and really kind of offset those capacity issues that, that may occur out there, I guess. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's, I think that is part of the prod, the project to include timings, updated signal timings with the, with the conclusion of the project.
Anyone else have other further questions? Okay, seeing none. Mr. City Manager, anything to follow up on for a wrap up on this?
No, I, I think the staff wanted to make sure we had committed before and wanted to follow through on providing council a touch point on this project. I think we shared with the perspective we heard tonight that we're pleased with the results of the traffic study and the work our engineering staff and consultants have done to modify that project based on daily traffic utilization in that area while also addressing the underlying themes of the grant, which is pedestrian and traffic safety. And finally, we'll keep you apprised of this project as we really ramp into the design stage and the public engagement phase moving forward. So nothing further on that item.
Okay, thank you very much. And then we're at 7:27, so we take about a five minute break, just go on an hour and a half, and then we'll come back and talk about Renterity in just a moment.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Okay.
But Heather, did you tell Suzanne how pleased you heard Kristi said? Suzanne suggested it, so she should get the credit. Mr. City Manager, do we need Mr. Kovar? Okay. He's free to proceed.
Yes.
All right. So, let's go ahead and start, restart the meeting here. I know we're going to talk about-- Okay. So, we're going to talk about rental-ready program. Mr. City Manager, if you want to give us an update or kind of an overview, that'd be great.
Yes, I'm going to go ahead and have Community Development Director Tom Skennell come forward to share on this topic. While Tom's doing that, this is a program that was adopted by the city in 2016, modified a few years after that with some of the inspection criteria. And now that several years have elapsed since then, staff believes it's appropriate to take a renewed look at what those inspection criteria are, as well as frequency of inspections. So, Mr. Skennell and his team have worked last several months to prepare this, and we're looking for feedback this evening that you may have. We're intending to bring ordinance forward in January for your consideration. So, I will turn it over to Mr. Skennell now.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Tom Skennell, and I'm the Community Development Director. So, tonight's presentation, I'm going to give an overview on both the rental-ready program, looking at the background, how it came about, the changes that we're looking at, as well as the landlord/tenant code. Both of these play together. They go hand in hand. One is on the, the rental-ready program is more on the front end, and the landlord/tenant complaint process comes more on the back end. So, with that, I will start off with the rental-ready program. As the city manager had mentioned, this program went into effect June 1 of 2017. This program required all rental units to be inspected and pass a very basic health/safety list of items every two years. It requires the landlord to have a valid business license, and as part of that, to list all of their units that they have associated with that landlord license. And the purpose of the program is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of those residents, maintain attractive neighborhoods, and to ensure that interior standards are met. So, the current program has nine basic inspection items. I'll go through them real quickly. Things like no exposed electrical wire. You have working smoke detectors. The handrails are functional. They're secure. You have a property address on the outside. The units are connected to a working sanitary sewer system. There's a working carbon monoxide detector. You have a safe egress from the unit, the ground fault circuit. An interrupter is in place where it should be. It's functional. And you have furnaces, water heaters. They're in working order. They're properly installed, and they're maintained. So, as part of that, as part of the rental-ready program, the landlord hires a qualified housing inspector. This is from the city's approved list. And that inspector will look at each unit and grade, or not grade, but inspect for those nine basic health and safety items. If a unit fails, the landlord is required to resolve any deficiencies and have the unit re-inspected. Now, in the current program, all rental units get inspected, except for multifamily. The program, as it was set out, only 10% of the multifamily units get inspected. Our practice has been that every time a unit is inspected, that different units are inspected each time. That's only practice. It's not written down in code. And then ultimately, the inspector uploads through the city portal that passing inspection. That is where city staff can take that and take it to the next step as far as renewing that business license. So, why are we making changes? This program has been in place for a little over seven years now. When the program was first implemented is back in 2017. At that time, we were in the middle of reviewing the 2018 building codes. So, we didn't think it was an appropriate time at that time to change the inspection items shortly after the program first started. Jump forward to 2024. We are going through our next building code, series of codes, which hopefully will get adopted by city council in December. So, we thought it was an appropriate time as part of that to review the rental-ready program for updates, since it has been seven years. Both of these codes play, they go hand in hand. They're designed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So, now I'm going to go through a little bit of our proposed changes. What we've expanded and clarified several of the current inspection requirements. Those are in regarding the handrails, the property address, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, the means of egress, but also the ground fault circuit interrupters. We've expanded those, and we've clarified those, mainly brought them, mainly corrected code references that no longer exist. One of the first big changes that we made to the list of inspection items concerns electrical. The current requirement reads no exposed electrical wires, very, very basic. We wanted to expand that to make sure that these units have a properly maintained and functioning electrical system, make sure that there are covers in place where they need to be, and to follow the National Electric Code. The other change concerns sanitary sewers. So, what we did with this is we expanded and clarified the current requirement, which basically reads all units must be connected to a working sanitary sewer system, very broad, very general. We wanted to clarify that, add some specificity, talking about that all plumbing fixtures are connected to a sanitary sewer system in good working condition, but also that all sinks, lavatories, bathtubs, and showers are provided with hot and cold water. Water heater. This was lumped in with furnaces. And again, it's very general, talking about the furnace and water heater must be properly installed and maintained in a safe working condition. We wanted to add some specifics to that, require that there's hot water at all sinks and lavatories, bathtubs and showers, and it's at a minimum temperature of 110 degrees, and that where you have the hot water heater, that it's sealed to prevent leaks into the unit, and that it's fully operational. Moving on to furnace, again, as mentioned in the previous slide, the furnace and water heater inspection items were lumped together. We wanted to separate those, again, with the furnace. We wanted to make sure that the rental unit has a good working furnace that is able to maintain a minimum room temperature of 68 degrees in all rooms, bathrooms, and toilet rooms. And it tells us, tells the inspector where to measure that and how to measure that. And again, with a furnace, it's making sure that they are properly exhausted, that those exhausts are attached, they are sealed, and they are fully operational. And also specifies that cooking appliances and space heaters cannot be used to heat that space. This is a furnace or a whole unit system. Moving on to air conditioning, our current rental-ready has no regulations in regards to air conditioning. So, our proposal is to add that if provided by the lessor, that the cooling system, again, will be in good working order and can safely maintain a maximum temperature of 80 degrees in all bedrooms. And it tells you, it's three feet off the floor and two feet from the exterior walls. So, it's telling the tenant, as well as the inspector, how that is to be measured. Appliances, our current requirements, we don't have anything that regulates this. Many of our units have exhaust fans, refrigerators, stoves. Those types of appliances are in these units. And this specifies that if it's provided by the lessor, that these appliances are properly installed, they're maintained in safe working condition, and they're capable of performing the function that they're supposed to. Next, we move to the exterior. Again, the current rental-ready does not have any regulations pertaining to the exterior. Basically, this is seeking for these units to be watertight, that there's no leaks from the roofs, windows, or exterior doors, and that you don't have evidence of mold inside the unit that is coming from those external leaks. And one way to do that is to ensure that the roof and the flashing is sound, it's tight, and it's free of defects to admit rain. Now, going from the exterior of the unit to the interior, again, the rental-ready, as it stands now, does not have any requirements. And our proposal is any holes in drywall, subfloor, interior walls, those be fixed, patched, to ensure that the tenant has a habitable space. And I believe this is the last item that we are adding, is the window fall protection. Current rental-ready does not have any regulations regarding this. Our proposal is to add this for all rental dwelling units where you have an operable window that is more than six feet above the grade from the outside, and that window is located three feet or less from the interior floor, that you have a window where it can only open no more than four inches. As part of looking at the inspection items, wanted to look at other amendments to the rental-ready program, one of which is amend the requirement to allow for an inspection to occur, the latter of the change of tenant or at two years. What we have encountered over the seven years is some landlords with long-time tenants. There have been some issues with those tenants being home at that time, even though notification was given. So, at the change of tenant, when that unit is being changed over, there's a few weeks' time in which those inspections could be performed. Another change we want to make is require 50% of multifamily units to get inspected. Keep in mind that our current regulation is 10%. So, we want to up that to 50%. And we're also going to put into code, not just practice, but specify that the same units cannot be inspected back-to-back. So, essentially, what you're going to get is every four years, the entire apartment complex is going to have 100% of their units inspected. We're also going to require that those inspectors who perform these inspections keep those records for two years, minimum, and then also must produce those reports if the city requests those. And then the other change is to require the landlord to have a business license prior to obtain, prior to their tenants obtaining utility service from the city. Our proposal with this is to have this effective January 1 of 2026. The reason for that is some reprogramming that we need to do with our CityWorks software program that we use to manage business licensing. Some other changes, increase the fee that the inspectors charge. The current charge is, on the initial inspection, is $50. Increase that to $100 for the initial inspection. And then index both of these fees to the Consumer Price Index. On the reinspection, increase that from $30 per unit, as it stands now, to $60 for any reinspection. Our intent is also to improve the city's website, add more resources and information, both for landlords and for tenants. So when they go to the city's website, they can find more information there. All right, switching gears to the other half of the presentation, the landlord-tenant code. A little bit of background about this. The landlord-tenant code was enacted in 1989. Very minor updates occurred in the 1990s, but no amendment since then. Overall, the city receives very few complaints, and we have no clear process for handling those complaints. Don't get me wrong, when we get those complaints, we do work those, but there's no clear process for that. So as our dive into this, we seek to make improvements there. On the complaint updates, would like to introduce what we are calling a deficient landlord. It's a concept where if a landlord has three or more valid landlord-tenant complaints in a 12-month period, they get added to this deficient landlord list. So what does that mean? If you have a, if you are a deficient landlord, all of your units would be inspected by the city for, on a monthly basis, for six months. And the only way to get off that list is to have six clean months of no violations found. Essentially, we're trying to change the habits of some of the landlords that we have, that we have a standard of how we want our landlords to operate. And we have this process lined out. Now, during that in six-month deficient landlord process, if violations are found, again, the landlord is given reasonable time to fix the violation. But if the landlord doesn't fix that, then one month is added. Again, it goes back to, you got, the landlord would need to have six clean months in order to get off the deficient landlord list. As mentioned, we wanted to codify our landlord-tenant complaint process. And we divided that into two paths. We have our non-critical. These tend to be, again, like the name says, they're non-critical, but there's still violations there. It could be, the landlord hasn't fixed the exhaust fan in my bathroom. You know, it's been three weeks, he hasn't done it. He or she have not done anything about it. We have a process where we notify the owner, the landlord of the issue, give them a period of time in which to address the issue. It could be, I've contacted this person, they're going to come out on this date. But again, the goal is to gain compliance from the landlord. If the landlord still doesn't fix the issue, we have some options there that the city can take. You know, give additional time if needed. Go down the business license suspension or revocation process or write a ticket for municipal court. Moving to the critical health or life safety. Again, these tend to be a little more critical, so we're going, again, there's a million different variations that these could take. And our process would be, we'll notify the owner what the issue is, give the owner some time to address that, correct the violation. If the owner still does not respond, does not fix the issue, we have some options here. We can, again, these are for critical health or safety. So we could require the unit to be vacated. We could re-inspect the property, initiate the business license suspension or revocation, or write a ticket for municipal court. Ultimately, the city's goal is to gain compliance as quickly as possible so that we have a safe living condition. Some other landlord-tenant updates prohibits the retaliation by landlord. This could be eviction. This could be a landlord discontinuing or turning off utility service to the unit or ask the tenant to reimburse the landlord for fees assessed, whether that's, you know, the cost of having the exhaust fan repaired or any fees that get assessed. So as part of this, we would prohibit that type of retaliation. On the flip side, we also want tenants to not make false complaints. So we've identified that is if a tenant knowingly makes three or more false complaints in a 12-month period, the city could then write a ticket against that tenant for making those false complaints. If it's valid, there's no strike against that tenant, of course. Some other updates. Again, keep in mind, the landlord-tenant code was initially written back in 1989. It had the requirement that the landlord provide a landlord-tenant guide to all tenants, and the tenants had to sign that. We were the only municipality that was doing that. And as part of our website enhancements, we will put that same information out on the city's website. The landlord-tenant code had many outdated code references, so we're correcting those. I mentioned, we want to make the enhancements to the website, which would also include a portal where a tenant can make an online complaint. We will get there. It may take us a little bit of time, but we will get there. And then for those that still like the paper complaint forms, we have already updated that, and that is available on the city's website. We made that much easier for the tenants to complete and fill out and get back to us. And we also hope to have complaints be made via the In Depth Now app as well. So we'll have the website, the app, as well as the updated paper form. So with all these changes, it is going to demand some additional resources. During the implementation phase of rental ready, the city had hired and utilized one staff member that served as that point of contact for rental ready and landlord tenants. As you had staff turnover, those duties were shared amongst the other business licensing staff. So staff's recommendation would be to add one additional staff member to coordinate the rental ready program, as was done when it was initially implemented. But then also coordinate the landlord-tenant complaints, since we're making that more visible via the website and the In Depth Now app, that that staff person would handle those. And then that staff person would also be involved in the inspections of the deficient landlord units, as well as in landlord-tenant complaints. So that concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Please proceed.
I'm not sure as much as comments as questions, but, you know, I've been working with Mr. Scannell and other staff to kind of take a look at this. I've listened to a lot of landlords, a number of landlords. I've listened to a number of tenants to try to kind of hear some of the concerns, as well on both sides, as well as to kind of help maybe guide some of this discussion. And so I just want to let the council know, as well as the community, that I'm going to, I've scheduled a couple of further listening sessions. And the listening sessions are really for, to listen to feedback on the proposed changes. Not on, you know, not to come and make a complaint or something to that effect, although we could tell you how to do that. But to listen to any feedback on the proposed changes prior to our looking at those on our agenda in January. So I've scheduled those, and I just want to let you all know when those are. One will be on the 18th of December at 2:00 p.m. here in Conference Room D at, here at City Hall, just outside these doors to the right there. And then the other one will be on a Saturday morning, on the 21st of December, at 10:00 a.m. at Blendwell Cafe over on 24 Highway. So those are a couple of things that I just wanted to let folks know about. In addition, I do have a couple of questions, Mr. Scannell. So we really didn't, in this process, we really didn't look at or evaluate the inspectors themselves. Would that be accurate statement?
Correct.
And so I guess a couple of questions about that. How does someone get on that inspector list if they want to?
So within the existing rental ready ordinance, it identifies the qualifications that they have. I should have brought that with me, but it's, you have to have the certification and there's one of several different housing inspector certifications that they must have in order to get on that list. And there's a RFQ process that they go through, and then the city evaluates that, looks at the qualifications that those inspectors have. And then if they meet that, then they get added to that list.
Okay. Has there been much change in that list over, you know, while we've, in the last seven years, while we've been?
A few names have dropped off, and one or two have been added.
Okay. So have we done any analysis on that part of the process, I guess?
We have not, no.
Okay. But that's something we could look at in the future?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
After we make these other changes and?
Yeah, absolutely, we could look at that process change. Cities do it a variety of different ways, whether it's in-house versus third-party, whether it's citywide, or whether it's a neighborhood, or whether it's a certain type of rental unit. We've seen it all. Some cities are only concerned about apartments. Another city may only be concerned about single-family rentals. So yeah, so as far as the inspection process, that could be something that if the city council directed us, we could look at that.
And then do you have, like, with the changes to requiring the inspectors to keep their records for two years and things of that nature, would you anticipate, like, auditing them periodically or at least making some request to evaluate those?
Absolutely, yes. And also what our intention is, as the city manager had mentioned, we would bring this forward to the city council in January. We would hold meetings with those inspection companies and inform them of what the new items are pending city council approval, but also outline what our expectations are.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Any questions from Councilmember McCandless or Councilmember Stewart?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Tom, has there ever been any discussion, either this time or in the past, about possibly bringing the inspections in-house and the city actually do them?
Initially on, I was here when the initial rental ready discussions were taking place. And at that time, there was, as part of this, that is not something that we looked at. We looked at the inspection process, inspection items, how those things function. But as mentioned, that is something that we could definitely look at, kind of a part two of rental ready, to take a look at how best to handle that.
Okay. And then the other question, you mentioned that there would be an increase in fees. Is that going to be covering the staff member that you're proposing?
So those fees are paid directly to the inspection companies. And staff's thinking behind that is the original fees were set out seven years ago. And as you are aware, the costs have gone up. But also, we have gone from nine inspection items to 16 inspection items. And some of these items will take more time, meaning the inspectors will have to spend more time in the unit, looking at the roof, the windows, the exterior doors, to ensure that they're keeping the rain out. But then also some of the other items that we added.
Okay, so if you do hire another staff member, how's that going to be? How's their payroll?
We will work with the city manager through the budget process to ask for that additional staff person.
Okay, that's all I have for now, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have other further questions? Councilmember McCandless? Anyone else have other further questions?
She's muted.
Is she muted?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. I was listening to your information about how people can make reports for landlord issues, that the tenants can make complaints. And you listed the In Depth Now app, you listed on the website and paper. I am wondering if we have the possibility of doing a dedicated phone line, in part because the first two options require someone to have electronic devices. So you have to have a smartphone to do the apps, and you're going to have to have the email capability to submit the request otherwise. So that's one consideration for us. The other is our landlord-tenant responsibility documents. Are they available in Spanish? Are our forms available in Spanish? Just making sure that we're thinking about the broad swath of people in the community. So I'll stop there before I ask my next question.
I do know that Assistant City Manager Charlie DeSalle and myself had have conversations about the website and ways to make that available in different languages, and then starting to work towards getting our documents in more than just English. So those are items that are on our list, and we're slowly making some progress towards that.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just interested- I'm just interested in you adding "the roof shall be sound." Are you expecting them to get up and do a roof inspection, or are you just looking for "there are no holes that communicate to the sky"?
When the item talks about "the roof and flashing shall be sound, tight, and free of defects," that could involve getting up on the roof, but in some of the structures, a ground inspection may suffice. Keep in mind that that requirement also talks about no evidence of interior mold, and that would be mold coming from a leak in a roof, in a skylight, from a door or from a window. And those would be things that you could see from the inside of the unit.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my last question is, when people end up on the deficient landlord list, and they are on that list for six months of sequential inspections, is there a $100 fee for each inspection? And what do you do if they have multiple units?
So if a landlord is on that deficient list, all of their units that they have licensed with the city will receive those monthly periodic inspections. As far as the fee goes, that is something that we could add and specify, that as part of that, that the landlord pays all of those associated fees with that. But those inspections would be done by city staff.
Okay. So let me make sure I understand that. If I own a 50-unit apartment complex, and I end up on the deficient landlord list, each one of my apartments has to be inspected and passed in order for me to then come off the list?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else other further questions? Mr. Mayor, please proceed.
Mr. Scannell, to continue on with what Councilmember McCandless was speaking of, with the multifamily, 50% of the units, is that $100 per unit?
Yes.
Okay. A suggestion, as I was listening to the conversation, take place there, if someone who has neglected their property to such a manner to where they have to be re-inspected once a month, perhaps a higher rate, maybe the initial inspection rate would probably be more appropriate, if that is something that we can do on the legal side of things for, to help put pressure on them to get their properties up to snuff. The requirement to have the landlord have a business license before renting, does the person who is going to have the electricity, electrical bill in their name, do they have a certificate that they can take IPL to show that all things are in compliance there, or will that show up when the address is placed into the system?
Yes, it will show up in our customer service utility billing system. So with the implementation of that pushed out to January 1 of 2026, we're going to pivot as far as City Works goes. And currently landlords have a business license, and then they list all of their units underneath that license. And so we're going, in order to have addresses and know which addresses are licensed, so that our customer service utility folks can see that, we're going to license each individual unit, and then put that as a child case underneath the parent case landlord license. That will take some reprogramming and reconfiguring of City Works, that is why we need that one year. But that will allow us to have a much higher percentage of licensed landlord units in the city, which then you have more licensed landlord units in the city, then you have more of these units that are getting inspected every two years, or in the case of a deficient landlord on a monthly basis.
With retaliation by the landlord, how do we intend to enforce that?
If we receive complaints, so the tenant will have to contact the city to inform us of, hey, I made this landlord-tenant complaint, and now my landlord is trying to charge me with the fees associated with making the necessary repairs. We would work with the city prosecutor to evaluate that and see which steps that we can take.
Okay. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. You answered a lot of the questions there that I had, Mr. Scannell, so I appreciate that. One of the questions I have is, you referred to the fact that in the past, there was some discussion with the prior council about having in-house inspectors, and they chose not to do that for a variety of reasons. We don't need to go down that path, but just to frame the discussion, the question I'm going to have now is, do you have any preference either way, and would you be open to the discussion, like Councilmember Stewart asked, regards to bringing in-house, and then making sure that we've got the fees associated to make sure you cover your cost?
I think if we do an analysis, so if the council asks us to, what I keep calling is Phase Two, Phase Two is look at that inspection process. We will do that, and we will give you an honest recommendation on what's best for balancing the landlord, the tenant, as well as the city as a whole, what's best.
Yeah, it would be my wish, and I'll certainly reach out to my colleagues to see if they have any preference on it, but my preference would be that we would bring it in-house for the next budget cycle, so that we would have that ready to go, and give you time to ramp up and have that ready to go, and then, of course, give the inspectors a sense that they're having this, that they would adjust their businesses so they feel fairly taken care of. But that would be my preference, is to take a look at that, if there's no objections of anyone to address that. Please proceed.
I guess my comment to that would be, I'm happy to look at it. I'd like to see the analysis before we determine which is the better way to go with it. I mean, before we decide whether it's better to bring it in-house. Seems to me like the analysis might, you know, inform that decision.
Sure. No, but I would, my question on this is, when we approve this in January, to put that as one of the triggers on there, to have that analysis done. That'd be my wish, if I had it, you know, if I could get everyone's, you know, wish with that too, I'd be, I would be grateful. But of course, that will depend upon all of us having that agreement. So very good. I've also had folks have complaints about retaliation. I don't know if you addressed that question earlier, and I was thinking about my question. So if you, did you handle that earlier, or?
Yes. So in our landlord-tenant code, one of our proposed changes is to prohibit the landlord from retaliating against the tenant for making a complaint. And that could include eviction, it could include reducing services of some type, whether that's terminating trash service, or turning off the water, or whatever, or, oh, I forget what the third one was. Or the landlord asking for the tenant to reimburse the landlord for the repair, or any fee that the city associated against them, so.
And would we maybe make any changes to the city code in order to give the prosecutor some authority on that, or is there, do you think the prosecutor has some leeway within the code to address that issue?
Yeah, I've already run, I ran this by the city prosecutor, and he will, he would evaluate it on a case-by-case basis, but this gives him essentially enough there so that he can evaluate it on a case-by-case basis.
Because I've heard of people who've, you know, pretty severe, you're in a situation, you know, you're at your, you know, month-to-month survival, and, you know, a landlord retaliates against you, or threatens, just the threat of retaliation can be frightened of people. And so we want to make sure they're protected. So I appreciate that, and I apologize for addressing that question again. So, very good. Any other questions or comments? Please proceed.
Just real quick, Mayor, just for a quick context, I know Mr. Scannell, Mr. City Manager, and a few of the others were here, and also for our KC tenant friends that are here, when this initially was brought before the council, and we adopted it almost seven years ago, it was quite a despicable display of behavior of those individuals and those people that were not supportive of what we were trying to do here. And all the threats that was thrown at our way, that all the things that were going to happen that were thrown at our way, which none of them happened. And all we were doing as a council was trying to bring some basic health and safety in to be right here where we're at now. What we had done in '17 was just to start the conversation, get the door opened. So here we are, just expanding on what we did in 2017, so.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, any context from your perspective on this discussion?
And just a reminder then, for everybody that's got an interest in this topic, the ordinance will have a first reading at the January 6 city council meeting, and then because of the holiday, Tuesday, January 21st, will be the night pending, that there's no postponement or continuance of the ordinance, that would, when the council would vote on this.
Okay. Very good, thank you. With that, I know our city clerk has some business to take care of, so I will turn it over to her.
A recommendation has been made to appoint Kevin Baer to the Independence Park Commission. A recommendation has been made to appoint Cassandra Krul to the Sustainability Commission. A recommendation has been made to appoint John Powell and reappoint Dennis Tharp to the Street Improvement Sales Tax Oversight Committee. A recommendation has been made to reappoint Bruce Frakes to the Public Safety Tax Oversight Committee. A recommendation has been made to appoint Terry Martel to the Public Advisory Board, I'm sorry, the Public Utility Advisory Board. And a recommendation has been made to appoint Cindy McLean to the Board of Adjustment. Staff request direction to add a resolution to the next regular meeting for all of these appointments for these individuals of the above boards.
Thank you. See, no other further discussion or questions? We will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.